And good evening, welcome to the May meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. As always, we will begin with a report from our clerk of actions taken in closed session, Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, we have one matter to report from closed session. On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved a three months unpaid leave with benefits to a classified employee. That is all there is to report.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we invite you to stand and join with us in an invocation to be led by Trustee Jay, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Trustee Lang.
This is Memorial Day of Dervance, even the Memorial Day is not actually until the 30th. My remarks this morning on this brief invocation are obviously taking great note of that. Dear Heavenly Father, with humble hearts, we bow our heads in thankfulness for the many blessings on this Memorial Day. We are so blessed to live in this country with its endless freedoms and resources. We are hugely thankful for the men and women who have given their lives to preserve these freedoms. We are also indebted to our servicemen and women for their willingness to serve in uniform even if they had to put the rest of their lives on hold. Heavenly Father, please protect them and bring them home well and healthy. All of us are so grateful and thankful that we live in America, a safe America, thanks to these service people. We also ask for a blessing for our colleges and the students, faculty, and staff who labor together here. We ask that as trustees, we make wise and righteous decisions concerning the education of the 40,000-plus students in this college district. Again, we are incredibly thankful to live in this free country. God bless America. Amen.
And again, piggybacking on Trustee Jay's wonderful remarks, we remember all of those in uniform who have given their lives for the flag of our nation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, at our May meeting, we welcome a new face. We said hello to her last month, but now she's up here and ready to start a year of service to the district. The new face belongs to our student trustee Bianca Bailey. And welcome. At this point, if you'd join me right back here, we'll do the swearing in and move on, shall we? Great. (APPLAUSE).
I, Bianca Bailey.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
...to the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
...and that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
...the duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Welcome aboard.[282.52][282.52](APPLAUSE).
I would like to introduce my family, my Uncle Charles Bailey, if you would please stand.[314.87][314.87](APPLAUSE). My mother Val Washington.[322.27][322.27](APPLAUSE). My godmother Sandy.[327.62][327.62](APPLAUSE). My father Steve Bailey.[333.18][333.18](APPLAUSE). And my church family in the back.[337.81][337.81](APPLAUSE). I just want to thank you all for coming to this event. Thank you.
And if you'd like, why don't we go down there to the podium, and I think that would give Tracy a good opportunity and get some good background for some photos?
With your family.
With your fa-- well, of course. Before they run out the door.
Hi.
Come on.[363.03][363.03](LAUGHTER).
You want to do the swearing thing again, or are you good?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, everybody, get in. President Wagner, if you'll join us.
You can work.
You may help.
And then I'll get out of the way.
Your family.
They're almost there.
Family, you don't need to suck anymore.
One, two, three. One more. Two, three. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, just family picture. Except we're making it.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Bianca.
That's cruel.
What?
That's cruel.
I'll tell you why.
Thank you very much for joining us. All right, we have a number of resolutions. The chancellor and I will move down to the podium, and our good clerk will read the resolutions. We begin with Larry Perez, the Orange County Community College Professor of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, would you join us at the podium?[474.12][474.12](APPLAUSE). And we would ask President Wagner and Chancellor Mather to, and President Barnett, Barnett, if we could, to come to the podium. A resolution. Whereas Lawrence Perez, a professor of mathematics at Saddleback College, who has innovatively provided his students with an individualized learning experience, was named Orange County Community College Professor of the Year by the Orange County Department of Education. And whereas Lawrence Perez has served Saddleback College with a great distinction to teaching excellence since 1999, and whereas Lawrence Perez is known for creating a welcoming learning environment that dismantles barriers that may exist in the student-teacher relationship, and whereas Lawrence Perez chose to extend his teaching philosophy beyond the walls of the classroom and create Algebra2Go, an online tool that features instructional and humorous videos starring Mr. Perez as both professor and student, which allows his students to review classroom material at their own pace and provides an anxiety-free way of mastering previously learned math skills or tackling a new equation, and whereas Lawrence Perez's students praise his unique ability to transform a feared subject into a fun and enjoyable learning experience through his unfailing approachability, unflagging enthusiasm for his subject, and unending commitment to using techniques that complement and improve classroom instruction. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Lawrence Perez for his outstanding dedication to his students and well-deserved recognition by the Orange County Department of Education as the Community College Professor of the Year. And I so move, Madam Secretary. And second, roll call.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Bailey.
Aye.[627.79][627.79](APPLAUSE).
It's interesting that all this has come about from me simply learning to listen to my students. It was their fear that really brought the Charlie character, who is myself, as a student character in the videos, which seems to resolve it. But the interesting now is I found that organizational leadership theory does provide the structure for the Algebra2Go project, and its human resource, its political nature of the online environment. Many of these theories I have learned from Dr. Mather himself at Argosy University as I pursue my doctorate in the educational leadership theory. So I'm looking forward to taking this project further and representing Saddleback College as the originator of this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Congratulations.[686.88][686.88](APPLAUSE). At this time, we'd like to ask President Wagner to remain there, as well as Chancellor Mather and President Barnett, while we invite forward Mark Crewman. Mark?
He might be in the back.
Hmm. Mark?
We'll move to the next one while Mark makes his way. Here we go.
There he is.
I can hear you.
A round of applause.[715.73][715.73](APPLAUSE). Whereas Mark Crewman, a television production specialist and an employee of Saddleback College since 1989, is known for his strong work ethic, commitment to his department and the college, an unmatched sense of humor, and whereas Mark Crewman is a constant advocate for Saddleback College's Communication Arts Department and takes a leading role in setting the program's priority and planning its development, and whereas Mark Crewman produces quality programming for Channel 39 and creates video productions to promote college programs and activities, including charitable documentaries and the 40th anniversary video, which consistently receive rave reviews, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend Mark Crewman for his 20 years of outstanding service and unique dedication to Saddleback College and bestow upon him the Saddleback College Classified Employee Outstanding Service Award for 2008-2009. I so move. Move to second. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Bailey.
Aye.[823.23][823.23](APPLAUSE).
Matt, fix the microphone. Thanks. I want to thank the board for no-nay votes on that.[833.44][833.44](LAUGHTER). And I want to thank Charlie for that glowing recommendation. I wanted to add a fair-to-midling outfielder, too.[841.82][841.82](LAUGHTER). Anyway, I...
Your team won, too. We'll get there.
Really appreciate the honor and thank the committee that nominated me for this prestigious award, and I thank the people I work with, Charlie Myers and Hiro Kanishi, Matt, Scott, and everyone else in CalMarts. And it's been fun. I've been to every board meeting in the last 20 years except for like two, and I've seen way more than I wanted to see, but it's been great, so thank you all very much.[872.73][872.73](APPLAUSE).
Mark, would you introduce your family to us?
Yeah, I wanted to introduce my family. There's my daughter Kelsey, my son Kyle, and my grandson Sky.[881.61][881.61](APPLAUSE).
We have a few more things for you here, Mark. First, obviously, the wonderful glass plaque, right? Second, a $100 United States Savings Bond for you by the South Orange County Community College District. But most important, as we all know, see, he's relishing this, he gets his own parking spot reserved. Not even the president has a parking spot reserved for me, so very pleased for you. Here's your official certificate.
Right.
No, don't sell it.[916.73][916.73](APPLAUSE). And you get your name, which is on there, if you noticed that, on the wonderful plaque that shows all of the recipients that have received this wonderful distinction. So congratulations from the college.
Thank you, Mark.[931.01][931.01](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations, Mark. Now, we would like to ask that President Rockmore join President Wagner and Chancellor Mather at the podium, and also be joined by G. Dixon. G. Is she here?
Yeah.
Right there.[957.01][957.01](LAUGHTER).
You don't hide in the front row.
A resolution honoring G. Dixon, Irvine Valley College Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year 2008-2009. Whereas Carolyn G. Dixon is a senior administrative assistant for the Public Information and Marketing Office at Irvine Valley College, is known for her strong sense of community in her working environment, as well as regularly demonstrating philanthropic and compassionate behavior to her fellow coworkers for their birthdays, weddings, and other occasions that she is never too busy to remember. And whereas G. Dixon participates with her colleagues as classified Senate President and CSEA First Vice President in several college and district meetings and collaboration with administration, faculty, and staff, and whereas G. Dixon demonstrates a wonderful sense of humor, communication skills, collegiality, problem-solving for students and staff, a sincere desire to assist others, and an overall positive attitude which has made measurable differences in the lives of faculty, staff, and particularly students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Carolyn G. Dixon for 12 years of outstanding service and bestow upon her the Irvine Valley College Classified Employee Outstanding Service Award for 2008-2009. So move. Call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Bailey.
Aye.[1086.23][1086.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. After hearing all those things, I think I'm underpaid.[1096.01][1096.01](LAUGHTER). That's a lot I have to remember that.[1101.33][1101.33](LAUGHTER). No, but I just want to say thanks. Thanks to IBC president Glenn Rockmore, and I happen to know who wrote an awesome, awesome letter, Fran Miller, who's on vacation right now, who couldn't be here. Thanks to you, Fran, and the committee, and thanks to the Board of Trustees for doing this every year. This is really, really nice, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.[1127.73][1127.73](APPLAUSE).
Yes. Well, G, congratulations from the bottom of my heart. We all saw your sense of humor, and in fact, she did two birthdays today, as a matter of fact, and did a fine job at it. Well, you probably know what's coming. You have also this beautiful crystal recognition here to put on your desk, and inside of here you have the $100 savings bond, as well as your own parking spot, as you know. So there you go.
Thank you.
And also, you have a plaque here that...
It's already on there.
For one year, you'll get to display wherever you like, hopefully in your office, and appreciate that.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Again, congratulations very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.[1181.08][1181.08](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, President Rockmore. Congratulations, G. We'd like now to ask that President Wagner and Chancellor Mather remain at the podium, and please be joined by Jay Sershula at this time. Jay?[1198.01][1198.01](APPLAUSE). A resolution honoring Jay Sershula as the Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year 2008-2009. Whereas Jay Sershula, a database administrator and team member in the District Information Technology Department since 1996, is a lead staff member in the multi-year project to replace the student information system, and one of the lead developers of the award-winning MySite and SmartSchedule projects. And whereas when MySite performance challenges were encountered in January of 2009, Jay Sershula would not give up, slept only three to four hours each night for three days, and worked tirelessly in his efforts to get the problem solved. And whereas MySite has become integral in the day-to-day operation of the colleges and ATEP, and any downtime is disruptive, Jay Sershula is the person most responsible for the smooth functioning of the system due to his willingness to work odd hours, professionalism, and dedication to students and staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend Jay Sershula for his 13 years of outstanding service and unique dedication to district services and bestow upon him the District Services Classified Employee Outstanding Service Award for 2008-2009. So move. Call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Congratulations, Jay.[1336.23][1336.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes, for pronouncing my name correctly and beautifully. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I lived with that myself.[1349.71][1349.71](LAUGHTER).
I work with an extremely talented and hard-working group of people in District IT, and I feel that any one of them could have won this award. Thank you for honoring me with this.
Thank you.[1364.47][1364.47](APPLAUSE). Congratulations, Jay. Would you introduce your family to us, if there's some here?[1369.01][1369.01](APPLAUSE).
Jay, it is my distinct pleasure to recognize you as the Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year from the District Services Unit. And Trustee Fuentes mentioned in your introduction that how tired you were, working three days, and you still look a little tired, but happy.[1393.13][1393.13](LAUGHTER). But we really appreciate the great work that you do in the District IT Department, and you're absolutely correct that District IT is really made up of some outstanding individuals, and you really exemplify them beautifully. Here is a crystal plaque for you to display on your office desk, and also we have for your gift certificate, United States Savings Bond for $100, as well as the coveted parking space closest to the building for you. And of course, we also have your name on the plaque that, of course, you can put it in your District IT area, or you may wish to take it home and short your family and friends, but probably you want to bring it back and keep it in the work space. So this is a beautiful perpetual plaque that we keep. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.[1453.53][1453.53](APPLAUSE).
The first request is from Carla Westfall.
My name is Carla Westfall. I teach math here at Saddleback. This year, the two recipients of the Math Department Scholarship were both former students of mine. I would have liked very much to participate in the ceremony and present these excellent students with their awards. However, as I've done since 2005, I chose not to participate in the ceremony. The inappropriate inclusion of a religious invocation offends me. Not only does it violate my own rights, it puts me in the very awkward position of trying to honor my students and celebrate their accomplishments while letting them know that I do not condone your inappropriate behavior. ASG, the Associated Student Government, formally requested that you replace the invocations at both the scholarship ceremony and commencement with a moment of silence, a moment that could certainly be used for prayer by individuals who chose to do so, but that would not alienate those who don't share your faith or who are simply uncomfortable imposing a religious practice on a captive audience in a public setting. I and many others have made this request before, yet you continue to deny it. I also have for you tonight copies of some comments by Carmen Mara Hernández Bravo, who is unable to be here tonight as she is at a rally in support of same-sex marriage. She and her partner have been consistent scholarship donors for many years, but felt they could not continue to participate in the school ceremony because of the religious invocation. Instead, they honored five students in a private ceremony at their home. I think this was a beautiful and generous decision, but Carmen Mara and I and many others would like to see all scholarship recipients honored in a respectful, inclusive ceremony here at Saddleback.
Up next to speak is Jeff Sloan.
Hello, my name is Jeff Sloan. I'm a resident of Irvine, and I just want to say that students come from diverse religious backgrounds, and some of them may feel uncomfortable with an organized religious invocation, and it may be more divisive than unifying. Thank you.
We are now to the oral reports, and we begin with board reports. As always, we turn to the trustee, Trustee Jay.
Thank you, President Wagner. I really have just one thing I'd like to say this evening, and that is not only congratulation to all the people that got resolutions this evening, but I'd like to congratulate Bianca Bailey for joining us, and I'm sure we'll all have a great time working with you. So thank gosh you're on the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Okay, just trying to make it brief, although, as you all know, May is the big celebration month, and I was able to attend some, but not all, as I would have liked to. Of course, first, the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial Preview I attended. I attended the two colleges, Saddleback and IBC Scholarship and their graduations, the production of Sweeney Todd at Saddleback, and the president's reception following that. And of course, just two days ago, the birthday bash for KSBR. So lots and lots to do in May, and I missed more than I attended.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add my welcome to Bianca, how pleased we are that you bring a new voice and participation to our meetings. And I would like to extend to all the graduates of both campuses who received their degrees and we celebrated with on Friday, heartiest congratulations. Thank you.
Sir, Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening, and I would like to extend a welcome to our new student trustee, Bianca. And I noticed your first vote as a student trustee was to honor the Teacher of the Year, so that's something you'll always remember. Good. It was a busy month for me. For the first time in 16 years, I could not attend the graduations. I had a family emergency, and all is well at home. I missed everyone. I thought about you both sessions, and I'm glad all went well. And on that note, I just wanted to say that I do read the paper, and I saw this wonderful congratulations to all the students of both colleges, my kudos to... congratulations to all the students of both colleges, my kudos to whomever ran this, I'm not sure, I didn't ask ahead of time, and also in the world, Irvine World News, a similar ad. So this is really a great way to let the students know we're here. It's marketing, but it's also very welcoming to potential students from the high schools. And I did attend a visit at Oloney College in the Bay Area. What city were we in, Don, trustee? Newark, California. Oloney College is a green college, if you will, about 100,000 square foot structure. A number of us visited. We're looking at ways of energy efficiency here on this campus. And what amazed me for such a large building, the utility bill last year was a total of $75,000. And that's just phenomenal. That's air conditioning, lighting, they have labs where they have to have fans running 24/7 to pull out the vapors from chemicals. It was just amazing. The air conditioning was very comfortable. It was like no building I've ever been in before. There's solar panels on the roofs, and I have really bad hay fever, and I noticed when I got up in the morning, I took a hay fever pill, but as time went on, the longer I was in the building, the better my sinus headache got. So it was just amazing for a building to have such a freshening of the air, very light and bright. It's the way of the future, and to have such a low-energy bill, I was very impressed. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me also follow up on Oloney College. I believe it was President Rockmore was on their accrediting team, or something along those lines, and found and suggested that we take a trip up there. And a number of us, trustee Williams, trustee Lang went, a number of us, and I think we really love what they had done with the place. I mean, I think they've done a nice job with, I mean, they're one of the few platinum lead buildings in the state, and it was a lot of fun to see what is going on up there, what they've done, bringing some ideas back to us, perhaps ATEP, perhaps our other campuses. So I appreciate the opportunity to get up there and take a look at that facility. Hats off also to President Burnett and Michelle Anstadt for their work on behalf of the Veterans Memorial and the very nice service that they put on earlier this month. It was a busy month, and we were able to fit that in, and it was a very moving and very fine event. I look forward to the dedication in a couple of months and inviting lots more people to the campus to see that and frankly, to be moved and touched by it. Graduation and the award ceremonies went off without a hitch, as best I could tell, and I know that only happens with an enormous amount of hard work. So thanks to everybody who was involved in the awards and graduation ceremonies, and good luck to all of our graduates. My thanks to the board that attended a special meeting just this last week, and to Bill Weary, our consultant, who made a special trip, came down and really put us through our paces, gave us a lot to think about and a lot of important information. And finally, we will be hearing a little bit more, I am sure, about the Saddleback IVC softball tournament. The trophy is sitting in front of President Burnett, but it was a spirited, hard-fought game. I note that he did not say in his report, in his written report, who won. We'll probably be hearing that later. I also want to thank Sergio and the name of his establishment that we went to afterwards?
Dees.
Thank you. You and I both. All right, well, Sergio and the team were very hospitable, and they have been very big supporters, Mr. Dees, Pete, or something, they had been very big supporters of Saddleback Athletics. And so I want to give a special shout to them because our teams have found that facility to be very hospitable to us, and so thank you to them. That is it. Trustee Milchiker.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to give a warm welcome to Bianca Bailey and wish you well, and we'll help you, and you seem like you'll do a great job. I really enjoy the people that were chosen today to be honored. They're all wonderful, Larry Perez, Mark Crewman, G. Dickerson, and Jerry Sershula, I hope I got that right. They're all just wonderful choices, and as I mentioned, Larry Perez was not only the teacher of the year from Saddleback College, but the community college teacher of the year from Orange County, and I believe this is the second time that we've had that from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, one from Saddleback and one from Irvine Valley College. So that's something to really be proud about. The Veterans Memorial introduction was very well done and is a really nice place to sit in the middle of the campus for reflection and a beautiful piece of sculpture there. This is a really wonderful time of the year. I attended three scholarship ceremonies, one for Saddleback College, one for Irvine Valley College, and one for the Human Services Department at Saddleback College, which are the people that are training to be counselors for drug rehabilitation and alcohol rehabilitation. It's always a tear-jerking event. In both of the scholarship ceremonies for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, where well over $350,000 was given away to the students for scholarships, I also attended a number of graduation parties for a number of our faculty, Rich Potress, who's graduate, who retired from Saddleback College, Julie Willard and Barry Rudman, who are retiring from Irvine Valley College, and Claire Elkins, who was retiring from Saddleback College. And it was really quite something to see all the professors that were granted emeritus status at both of our graduations, and they've been here for many, many years, great many years of hard work and dedication have been put in by all these faculty members, and they do deserve emeritus status. And I was also able to attend at Saddleback College a performance of a group of four women called "La Civius Biddies" on Mother's Day. And I took my mother and my sons and a number of different people, and I have to tell you, they weren't lascivious and they weren't biddies, but it was a very, very good program, and we enjoyed it very much. It was a nice way to spend Mother's Day.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. I'll also echo the sentiments that my fellow trustees have expressed in welcoming Bianca aboard. Bianca, you have a special responsibility and opportunity of representing the student body on this board. You follow in the footsteps of some just outstanding student trustees, and I have every belief that you will do a great job on your own in also representing the students on this board. I do want to also thank both college presidents, but in particular, everybody that worked on your team in making the scholarship ceremonies and in making the graduation ceremonies such wonderful events. They just deserve an awful lot of thanks from all of us. Both events were outstanding, and obviously, the students were the beneficiaries of that. So thank you very much.
Trustee Padberg would like to, as they say, revise and extend her remarks.
I neglected to welcome you, Bianca, and I do want to do that. You can see it's a very, very busy job. I'm sure you're up to it with all of the experience you have with ASG, and welcome and hit the ground running.
All right. And now let's hear from the woman of the hour, her first report, trustee Bailey.
I also attended both IVC and Saddleback's commencement ceremonies. I was also able to attend Saddleback's ASG banquet and my first scholar-bowler banquet, which was to welcome all the students who have gotten a 3.0 and above. They were actually all the athletes of Saddleback, and they all did a tremendous job achieving the GPAs that they did, and that is all.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome. Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to welcome our student trustee as well, Bianca Bailey. We had a meeting, and you've gone off to a great start. I look forward to working with you, Bianca. I know you'll do a great job. I'd like to take this moment, this opportunity, to give you a brief report on our visit to Oloney College. You already heard some comments to that effect. I was honored to join Board President Wagner, Vice President Williams, and trustee Lang on a recent visit to Oloney College's Newark Center for Health Sciences and Technology. 14 people from our district were on the trip, including President Burnett, President Rockmore, Provost Peebles, Professor Bob Cosgrove, Professor Wendy Gabriella, Professor Morgan Barrows, staff, and an IVC student by the name Eric Nolan. Here are some photos of that visit. It was a very exciting trip. The Newark Center, which is near Oakland, is very similar to what we have in mind for ATEP, and it is the first platinum-lead-certified campus in the United States. The 135,000-square-feet center features instruction in high-growth, high-pay careers in biotechnology, environmental studies, energy technology, respiratory therapy, nursing, and physical therapy assisting, as well as general education courses. The facility is a wealth of ideas for energy efficiency and environmental sustainability. Everywhere you go, the air was fresh, and the interaction with the students was facilitated throughout the campus. The Newark Center facilities incorporate solar power generation, geothermal heating and cooling, and a fresh air transfer, an energy recapture system known as an entalpi wheel that continuously contribute to the building's operational efficiency. Now, there's supposed to be, right there is a laptop, which is powered by a treadmill. A contingent from our district of Professor Cosgrove, Acting Dean Tammy Rice, Diane Pestolacy, Don Boucher, and Randy Peebles also toured to nursing simulation labs while in the area, the Samuel Merritt University Health Sciences Simulation Center in Oakland, and the Marin Simulation Center, which is affiliated with the College of Marin in Novato. This was a wonderful trip and well-worth investment of time and travel to get the most worthwhile ideas for our campuses as well as the future of ATEP. Thank you.
At this point, we'll turn to board requests for report. There are two written requests that have been received. The one from me has been revised, the scope of which it has been cut back, and I don't know whether the revised report has been sent out to the trustees.
It's available to all the trustees at the DS.
Okay, so it's in front of you. And it deals with registration problems that we had, and I think all of us got emails about concerning high school enrollment on May 11th, so I've made that request for report. And trustee Williams has submitted also a request for report from District IT on its accomplishments, changes, and future projects. So those are the two in front of us. Trustee Padberg.
I don't see what the chancellor is referring to that we have on the DS, but I do believe we got the first one, not the revised one.
Scratch out the last two sentences of the first report, and that's the only change.
Is that it? Okay. Because we did receive that on email.
Scratch out the last two sentences of the first report, no other changes. Trustee Lang.
I guess my only comment, both reports have to do with IT, and I'm wondering if there's some way perhaps that we could be, they could be combined to provide information that addresses the concerns that are in both.
There isn't, there is an IT component of mine, and to the extent that it's appropriate, I wouldn't have any objection whatsoever to that, although mine is broader than just IT.
Do them on the same evening, the same meeting.
Not a problem. Trustee Milchiker.
Where are you scratching it out? It starts where it does not appear.
The last, the last two sentences.
Starting where it does not appear?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. The last sentence, I would like to understand the problem better, that sentence, and the rest, and the rest of that sentence.
Wait, I'm not sure where you're scratching it out.
Go to the very bottom of the request for report.
Can you show me?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the revised one.
Oh, yeah, I think that this report can be revised so as to ask for the information without actually pointing a finger at any of our staff members or good people that work at our colleges.
I understand that.
I would like that to be revised before I vote yes on it.
That is why that has been removed. The intent was not to point fingers. If you look at the instructions, we are to include what board action may be taken as a result of the report. So I am not asking for any such action, and so I've taken that out. That's all.
No, but Chancellor Mather said that we, this is the revised report. So this does have something very accusatory in it, and I just don't like that sentence.
What sentence, please?
It starts where it does not appear to me. Here, I'll show you.
It does not appear to me.
Yeah, well, to me, it's very accusatory of some of our staff, and I would like that to be taken out because...
I will not take that part of the sentence out.
You will not? Well, then I will not vote for it then, okay? Because I think that we can probably do some research on this without accusing any staff members of anything, because we haven't really done the research as yet. So when you say it does not appear to me that something was not done, it's kind of accusing people of doing things before you have the facts. I'm a data person, I need the facts.
My facts are four separate times that I have personally been involved in attempting to register high school students. I have personally encountered problems. Therefore, it does not appear to me. Hopefully, the facts will prove me to be incorrect. I hope so. All right, let's take them separately, since there seems to be a problem. Let's deal with trustee Williams's request first, all in favor, signify by saying, do you want to speak?
Move approval, my own.
Second.
I just don't have his report, is it?
I don't either. I don't have his report either.
It's in your agenda. It's the next page of your agenda.
Oh, it's in there. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's that one.
3.0, thank you. Okay.
All right.
I have nothing in 3.0.
Let's...
I think that was the case of mine.
Nothing.
Here's one. From Wagner, I've got Wagner's, and here's trustee Williams, Jesse. 3.0.
Mine, that's okay. I have no problem with it, but it's fine.
Trustee Fuentes.
My line was empty.
Okay. Let's vote on trustee Williams's request for report.
I did vote.
All right, matter carries unanimously. We are now voting on the revised request of mine.
We just voted on Williams' report, right?
Trustees Jay and Padberg, please. Thank you. All right, we have six yes, two no. All right, I have been asked to and will, because we have lawyers on the time clock, advance item 6.1. They were, of course, not billing us for all that we just went through, right? Everyone laughs. I'm advancing item 6.1. It is an item here for approval, and counsel remain around in the event the board has any questions regarding this agreement, and it's an agreement with HCTD LLC.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Lang. That's all right, go ahead.
I have some concerns about this item, that, some of which I've managed to have some conversation about today, but the, I guess the gist of my concern on this item really has to do with, once we execute this agreement, obviously, we've pulled the trigger on this, which will then automatically start a stream of payments towards development of the project, and, you know, the concern I have about that is making certain that I'm comfortable that there are enough fail-safe provisions in the agreement, aside from the breakup fee provisions that are in the agreement, that would enable us to slow things down, avoid paying unnecessary dollars, to the extent that the project doesn't move forward as swiftly as we might like, based upon continuing perhaps to have negotiation problems or other snags that we may hit. And so I guess I would like to maybe have that a little bit further addressed. I suspect if I've got those concerns, that others on the board may also have those concerns as well.
See? All right, thank you, trustee Lang, and deputy chancellor Porter.
The strategy that we've been using for quite some time now on this project and the continuing conflicts that we've had with the city of Tustin is to keep with our job and move forward step by step by step and don't stop. And I think that that strategy has worked well, although it's, the progress has been much slower. We're at a point now where we've given the city the concept plan. The city is going to respond within a few days. We know that they'll have some objections, we'll work through that. So the question is, do we begin with the project, or do we hold? And by begin, I mean begin more comprehensive planning, beginning the architectural drawings, getting ready for construction bidding, those types of things. getting ready for construction bidding, those types of things. Or do we sit back and wait for the city, who may file a lawsuit someday? And if we're going to do that, how long do we decide we're going to wait and not make any progress? Anyway, with that background, we began negotiating an agreement for development services. Of course, the problems that we're having with the city are problems for whatever development company we work with, because the minute we sign the agreement, then that company gears up, hires people, begins working on the project, incurs costs, and would be in a position to lose money if, in fact, something occurs that the project doesn't go forward. So built into the agreement is a breakup fee that Trustee Lang talked about, and that's his fear, is that we would sign the agreement, we go forward, somehow or another, the city stops us, and then we're going to owe some money to the development services company. All right. With that setting, there are, there is a provision in the contract where if, let's say we're sued by the city, that we can stop work with the company for 90 days, I think it is, and during that time, try to get a feel for what's going on. If at the end of 90 days, it's still unclear, there's a provision that we could mutually agree to extend that period of time. And if, let's say worse came to worse, and we decided we had to stop because everything was so dire, in fact, we would owe a breakup fee. As we were negotiating it, we didn't think that was terribly unfair in that we were asking this firm to commit their resources to us, where they wouldn't receive the bulk of their fees until the construction actually occurred. So I want to ask counsel to make sure that I answered the question properly.
Good evening. My name is Andy Bernstein. I'm a shareholder with the firm of Jackson, DeMarco, Tyson, Peck, and Paugh, special counsel to the district with respect to the ATEP project.
There we go.
I believe, is it not turned on? I believe that Vice Chancellor Porter addressed all of the issues with respect to the breakup fee. I would, I would add that we, that the fee, we think, even if the breakup fee had to be paid, that the district, it's our assessment that the district would still receive fair value for the services that are going to be provided in all likelihood during the period that will start as soon as this contract is signed and for the foreseeable future. But that's, of course, an assessment ultimately that the board has to make. Do you want to add anything to that?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Trustee Lang, you still have a floor. Anything further?
Hold up.
All right. Trustee Milchker.
I too feel, particularly since Trustee Lang, who is a CPA, mentioned it, that perhaps we shouldn't go quickly into this kind of agreement in this kind of economic climate with so much uncertainty right now. Perhaps we should study the issue a little bit more, and I'm inclined to do that as well. That's my comment.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
I, this is a very big project. We've been working on it for years and had multiple possible partners that have presented to us. I feel comfortable that this is the best we can do and that we need to move forward. Frankly, I am concerned about a breakup fee, but it seems like a fairly small breakup fee. It could be larger. There are always uncertainties, so there have to be some penalties in a contract. However, I feel very confident about this company. I think we've done a very good job at vetting them, and I think it's high time that we get this project off the ground.
Trustee Fuentes.
We had discussions in our closed session, and of course, I am hesitant to go into that, but I'd go so far as to say that in those discussions, we're going to have some reports coming back to us. And I would like the opportunity to hear those reports discussed or presented to the board that were discussed earlier in our closed session before proceeding on this. And from my understanding, that would be within the next month. Would there be grave difficulty in taking a look at this for one more month?
Let me ask a clarification. I'm not sure what reports you're expecting. I don't think administration thinks any reports are coming.
Related to the correspondence by the city.
You may be referring to a response to the concept plan that has already been sent, and I believe you were expecting some response from the city in the next few days?
Yes.
That's probably what.
That must be what it is.
That's late June. I mean, that's after our next board meeting.
Well, then maybe it's 60 days, but those meetings that are to take place, I would like to have the input and know where we stand on that before moving forward with this. And so maybe it's 45 days.
Apologies, I didn't know frankly what meetings you were referencing. Trustee Padberg.
I just would like to ask, I know what you're referring to, Trustee Fuentes.
You do?
Yes, I do. Well, I know what you're talking about. I'm just not clear in my mind, I don't think that would have that much impact in, on this approval, but I could be wrong. So I'd like to have Deputy Chancellor and a Chancellor respond to that.
Okay. The discussions that we may have with the city coming up that could resolve our disputes would quicken the resolution, but it wouldn't, it isn't the only way that our disputes can be resolved. It's also could be resolved through measures at the court. Either way, we're confident that we're going to be proceeding with the project. The other, there was a point I didn't mention that maybe would help you, and that's that the work that we see going with this firm, the development services firm, is at least a year to a year and a half before we'd even get to construction. So that, if we don't move forward, we're sometime down the line going to be facing that same year to year and a half, getting ready to go to bid and to begin construction. So this is paving the way to move when we're done with the, with the city's disputes.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
I don't know if the Chancellor wanted to respond, but I was just going to say, I believe this agreement has a built-in safeguard for the problems we may be encountering in the future. Maybe our attorneys need to address that.
As Gary noted earlier, the contract does have a 90-day provision, essentially a pause provision, so that if something comes up, you, the development manager can be told to stand down for 90 days without penalty. However, at the end of that 90-day period, if the contract does not move forward, then the breakup fee is payable at that point. So there is a fail-safe, but it's a 90-day fail-safe.
Trustee Lang.
I also had queried the Vice Chancellor about this a little bit earlier. He had mentioned, I think he had mentioned the 90-day clause, and I think you had also indicated to me that we could perhaps mutually come to an agreement to extend that for some period or maybe even some indefinite period of time. Is that true or?
There is nothing explicitly in the contract on that point, but if we, if at the end of the 90-day pause, there's certainly always the possibility for the parties at that point to mutually agree to extend that 90 days for some period of time, assuming that both parties think that it's in their best interest to do so, the parties can always mutually agree at that point or can agree to some other, some other resolution. But there's nothing explicitly in the contract at that point.
Okay. And I think maybe, you know, one of the other, I think, valuable discussions that we had, I think that, just shut myself off there, that, you know, perhaps the rest of the board might benefit from, was how this kind of agreement, the economics of this kind of agreement compared to a standard type of developer agreement. And I think one of the points on that was that with this agreement, we basically wind up with a sort of flat base amount plus a percentage of construction costs, which the percentage part of that is probably a little lower than what the industry norm would be. Maybe you want to make a few comments about that in terms of the sort of weighing, the economics, help us to weigh the economics of this agreement, you know, on behalf of the district. Maybe the Vice Chancellor wants to say a word about that or two.
What I would, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, to invite Greg Goddard to address that question, since he's the economics consultant to the board on, with respect to this contract.
As Andy mentioned, I'm Greg Goddard. I'm a managing director with Alvarez &amp; Marcell, and I'm the real estate consultant to the district on negotiation matters. And as Andy mentioned, we worked hard to make sure that we were getting a fair market-based deal for the district on this agreement. And Brandy can mention how it compares favorably to other construction management agreements that the district has entered into, and I believe it does, based on the discussions we've had. I also have previous experiences and also interviewed some other development service providers as we were doing this to make sure that what we were ending up with was a fair and economical deal to the district. And I actually believe that the district got a favorable rate quote relative to the base management fee against the 4% of the development cost. Now, of course, a lot of things weigh into those types of agreements, such as how much do the buildings cost relative to other comparable situations. So you need to think of about a variety of economic factors, but I think that the district and its team considered those factors carefully in establishing and negotiating this fee.
Yeah, and I guess one of my concerns is, is that I think that's probably true to the extent that we get to construction on this project, but falling short of that, I'm wondering who benefits from the economics on this?
Well, I think, as Gary mentioned, you're paying for services that you definitely think that you're going to need or else you wouldn't go forward with this at this time. And also, as you mentioned, there's a lot of groundwork to be covered to move this development to fruition and actually break ground. And probably a year, year and a half is, at the shorter end of that timeframe. So as long as that you believe you're going to bridge the gap with the city one way or another, I don't see from my perspective any reason why you wouldn't move forward at this point to begin those services, because you want to get ATEP built, and that, and that provides for that. The breakup fee, another thing to Andy's comment, after the 90-day period, if it was in the best interest of the district, you could always reinstate the monthly base fee and begin to collect those services and not, not allow them to exercise their rights under the breakup fee, as long as you believe that the project was going to be moving forward in a reasonable timeframe.
Thank you. Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. Well, Trustee Padberg asked me for my comments, and my comments are going to be along the same lines that have just been made. I think, first of all, that there are certain services that we need before we'll get to the construction phase, such as planning and architectural drawings and the like, like Greg mentioned, in terms of some groundwork that needs to be done. Secondly, we are indeed about a year, year and a half away from construction, and so these services will be needed sooner or later. And since we have identified our developer in this case, there is another thing to be considered as to how long is the developer willing to wait before engagement, before we are left to find somebody else. There is a 90-day pause provision in the agreement. I'm pleased to hear from Andy that even though it's not included, but it's not prohibited either, that we could work with HCTD in terms of negotiating an extension on those 90 days. In a way, this also puts some emperors on the city to keep our project moving forward, that we have identified the developer and we are ready to go, because as long as they can keep us waiting, you know, then we just keep waiting. The question is for how long? And they need to get the message that we are rearing and ready to go.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know that the city, by my observation, is concerned whether we're ready to go or not. I don't know how much our signing agreement will be a motivating factor to them by their previous performance. Further, I don't feel the urgency that the developer is going to go away. There aren't a lot of clients or partners with a checkbook ready to do development today in this marketplace. So I think that might be a contrived urgency. I don't want to be opposed to this, but I just feel that I would be more informed by what is going to come out of meetings in the next, whatever it's determined now, 45 days, to be more comfortable. This 90-day pause is offered as something of a comfort to us in the timeframe that we've been dealing with, with ATEP. 90 days is nothing. I mean, it's the blink of an eye. I had hair when we started this ATEP process. And, you know, I don't know that 90 days does much for me. So I want to, I want to see, could we, could we take a month and a half or two to make a better decision?
Still hairy, Trustee Lang.
Yes, despite Trustee Fuentes' sallopish condition, I happen to agree with him on this, that I think that this, we shouldn't be too hasty. I think that it's important that all of the trustees thoroughly understand the agreement. In fact, one of the things that I would like to see happen, I'd be willing to bring this back at the next board meeting and not wait for even a full 45 days, but in the meantime, to the extent that administration could extract for the trustees the salient provisions of this and sort of list them out in a very orderly fashion, that would be something, I think, that would be of great benefit to everybody, to allow us to really understand the agreement a little bit better, know what we're getting into. This is a substantial commitment that we've had less than a week to study. I just think that prudence calls for us perhaps taking a little bit longer to consider it.
Thank you, sir. Chancellor.
In light of very reasonable comments by Trustee Fuentes and Trustee Lang, as much as we want to keep this project moving forward, I'm willing to see that this item be tabled, and we'll bring it back next month.
Trustee Jay.
Just an observation, I mean, the prices are on the floor right now, and it doesn't look as if in three to six months, they're going to change at all. Three years down the line, sure, they'll have started back up probably, but the thing is, this just seems a good time to be dealing with anybody, any vendor, and I guess a month to a month and a half, Gary, wouldn't affect that? Is that what you're saying here?
Are you asking if I think that it would be a problem if we waited for that long?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Would it be a problem if we waited a month or two?
A little one, but I think, I think it would work out okay.
Okay.
Trustee Williams.
If you would desire to table it, then, fine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're through. Trustee Williams.
I'll move to table till the June meeting.
I'll second that.
A non-debatable motion to table. Let's vote on the motion. And I'll tell my colleagues there was at least one request to speak still. You did not, no, okay, you're done.
I was just going to talk to the point of table.
Okay, everybody's been heard on this. All right. And the matter is tabled. All right. We will now go back to our regular calendar. We are at item 4.1, which is a report, or it's our annual, or our monthly, thank you, discussion item, dealing with the federal economic stimulus package. And we have a consultant, Dr. Lynn Green, here to speak. Let's start with Dr. Bermuda.
Thank you. I first met Dr. Lynn Green in Sacramento. I was at a Board of Governors meeting, and I was struck by the fact she seemed to know everyone there. Then I had occasion to accompany her on a trip to Washington, D.C., where we were grant hunting at first the Department of Education, then the National Science Foundation. And once again, she seemed to know everyone that we met with. But I found that in addition to her network, she also has a much experience. She has been responsible for a community college grant operation that brought in $14 million per year. I feel that we are fortunate to have engaged her services, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lynn Green for tonight's discussion item.
Thank you. Dr. Green, welcome.
He's taller than I am. Good evening. I'd like to make a short presentation on the funding opportunities in the federal stimulus package, and then entertain any questions that you might have. Everyone knows that there's about $760 billion that the federal government is sending down to state and local entities. But California's share of this money changes daily. So I'd like to talk about what we know in terms of local, state, and federal possibilities. We know that the U.S. Department of Labor is receiving multiple dollars in workforce training, that there will be competitive grants from various agencies, both federal and state, that will provide opportunities. And then I'd like to talk about state and local priorities. Workforce training dollars, as we know today, are moving from the U.S. Department of Labor to the California Workforce Investment Board. From there, those dollars will be distributed to the local workforce investment boards. And as you know, Dr. Mather serves on the Orange County Workforce Investment Board, so we are well situated for that opportunity. The announcements that have been made so far by the federal government in workforce training fit into those categories that are there currently under the law. They would like to do adult and youth training. But the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARRA, actually stipulates that community colleges can be awarded contracts for training opportunities. And so we're looking into that. IVC is actually considering some training in health care. Part of the workforce training dollars go directly to the governor for discretionary use. And he has announced that he would like to create the California Green Jobs Corps, which will serve at-risk youth between the ages of 16 and 24 to be trained in what we would call jobs of the future. In the competitive grant area, there's funding from various federal agencies, but they have not been announced yet. What we do know from the actual stimulus package is that the training will be in areas of energy efficiency and renewable energy industry, and luckily, in health care as well. What is not very well known is that there's a priority in the ARRA that is going to provide over 10 years, about $37 billion for health information technology implementation in Medicaid providers. Those are doctors in hospitals. And the state has recognized through the Legislative Analyst's Office this opportunity, and has suggested to the legislature that the state actually provide the match for these opportunities as they move down. What this means for community colleges is that we have to be poised and ready to do training in health information technology and the technicians who will serve those jobs. In his statement as the new president for science and technology, his plan is providing funding for the recruitment and retention of students in science, technology, engineering, and math. And he will be ordering the National Science Foundation to support these efforts. He's provided stimulus funds, and ATEP is seriously looking at an opportunity there for an instrumentation laboratory. That's what we know for sure. We also know that the latest data shows that Orange County is poised to have growth in the industry areas targeted by this federal stimulus package, in health services, in information technology, certainly in business and financial areas. And so South Orange County Community College District is well situated. Their county industry growth is in the target areas. The campuses are preparing training and education opportunities for the target populations and working with the Orange County Workforce Investment Board in this area. Also, the campuses are poised to develop green offerings, health care technology, and fundamental technology offerings to meet the challenge of this federal stimulus package. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And let me see if there are any trustees looking to speak. Trustee Donchikor.
One of the best things about attending both graduations at both colleges was, after the graduations, I had an opportunity to speak with some of our faculty members. And they were telling me about some of their particular projects and their particular disciplines of, of actually working with, with a seamless program with the state universities to train students for jobs, on the job, for technologies that are really in search of people working with them now. So they were very exciting projects to me. I'm just wondering, if you're going to be working with us to help us perhaps try to get some of this fund and to make sure that we're doing it in the correct way to be able to get some of this funding, because this is exactly what we're doing. From talking with the faculty, I was very excited about some of the projects that are going on at both of the colleges in this same particular arena. Also, I wanted to say that you have the same last name with me, as my maiden name, and it's spelled exactly the same. So, good name. Okay, thank you. Yes, I like the name, too. It's easy to spell.
It is. Yes, I am on contract to provide services to all three campuses. I've been working with the faculty at Saddleback. I've been working with the faculty at IVC already. And I've been working with ATEP.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Trustee Lang. First of all, thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Green, for your informative, both written and oral, reports on this. So I know that you were, report, I think the written report referred to funding for shovel-ready type projects. And I'm wondering, what, what grants have we already applied for at this point? Or is most of this still in the, I guess, development stage? Or where in the process are we in terms of submitting grant applications?
In the shovel-ready area, those are still being developed. We don't know which areas they're going to be in at this point. In terms of developing grants, we're starting on a multimillion-dollar project for ATEP. And we have already submitted a proposal to the Orange County Workforce Investment Board for Saddleback College, for the California Green Corps grant possibility. And IVC has put in a letter of intent to the Orange County Workforce Investment Board for training dollars in health care.
Okay, very good. And any idea what the magnitude of those grants are that you've just mentioned? Several millions of dollars?
Some are in the millions of dollars category. Some of them are in the $100,000 category. It's unknown at this point, because they're just applications. And we're trying to move forward with the Orange County Workforce Investment Board to provide them with support in their possible grant applications in the green construction area. And that is probably the largest grant at this point that we would be trying for. So we're providing support to our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Well, my questions are similar to those of Trustee Lang's. And of course, we all want to know how much of this money realistically can we get? And I would think that what the grant award committee is going to look at is what's the likelihood of employment in the area that you're looking to get money to train people. And I believe that health care and the green technology are going to maybe weather this economic downturn better than others. But I'm wondering, you mentioned IVC. What have you been working with Saddleback College to do?
In Saddleback, we've been working in the area of green construction. We've been working in the area of support for the Orange County WIB's possible large grant application in green construction as well.
And have you not worked with them at all on their medical or health training? Because that's a big part of Saddleback College, and it certainly could be expanded. And I guess the other thing is, how much of this stimulus money do you realistically think is going to get distributed out to the community colleges in California? And could we realistically expect to get?
The Act itself does not include community colleges.
Oh.
What it does instead is it provides opportunities for community colleges to partner with various institutions and community services. And so a lot of this depends on the activity of our local WIB and what they're going to apply for, because we will be part of their partnership. The competitive grants, those could be in the millions and millions of dollars for the state of California. And then the chancellor's office will be responsible for developing the competition and doing what it usually does, you know, the 30 to 45 days, and you all run as fast as you can in order to do grants for that area. There are various opportunities. There will be competitive grants. There will be construction money as well. But I'm also tasked with looking at grants that are outside the stimulus package to provide much more of a long-term plan in terms of where the three campuses would like to go, where their faculty would like to participate. And so I'm developing those plans for the three campuses as well, and looking at federal and state agencies.
Trustee Fuentes.
First, thank you very much, Dr. Green, for your input. A couple reflections. The money is fed to state, and to state before it comes to us. With the crises of leadership in California, failure of the legislature, failure of the bond issues in the last election, and so are the propositions. If the money gets to the state, what's the guarantee that it's not going to be shanghaied and never get to these lower echelons as targeted?
The Legislative Analyst's Office has done a complete analysis of what's available and has warned the legislature that parts of the federal stimulus package can be used for backfilling state shortfalls. But they've made it very clear to the legislature that there are other areas of money that cannot be touched. They are earmarked for specific purposes, and those are the monies that we're looking at.
But don't we have to also look at the realities that, as you mentioned, community colleges are not a designee presently? And also, the governor has excluded community colleges from his recent help plan in the, in the most recent addition of the budget. Those seem to me both boding very poorly for a dollar finally getting here.
And I would suggest that you might look at prior activity and realize that the governor realizes that the workforce is trained by the community college system. And since these federal dollars has only, they only have one goal, which is to put people back to work, the community colleges are recognized by the federal government, and I do believe are recognized by the governor, as being the major impetus behind the training that will put these people back to work. And all we can do is count on that possibility. But these monies are moving forward. The RFAs and the grant possibilities have been announced, and we're moving on each one as they come out to see what the role of this district and its three campuses can be in a situation that is not especially good for community colleges, but is really dependent on our service.
But I hearken back also to the experiences of the Nixon administration, where we had revenue sharing, and those were one-time grants. This money is really one-time grants.
Yes, it is.
And to my colleagues, I would suggest to all of us, we ought to think very carefully about receiving and utilizing this kind of money, because we built infrastructure, and we grow programs with one-time money. And the next year, or business cycle, financial cycle, budget cycle comes around, Mr. Obama and his Santa Claus suit isn't passing out money the next go-around. We're left holding the bag. So it's not necessarily a gift that continues to give.
Thank you. Let me ask, you have said you're working with both colleges. Is there anything the board of trustees can do to make that work easier or to facilitate getting some of these grants? Is there anything specific for us in this to do?
There will be possibilities where you can write support for the specific program that's being developed or is being modified in order to provide the service for training instead of a long-term educational opportunity. And so there will be questions at that time, and a role for you to play.
Thank you. Chancellor.
Thank you, Dr. Green, for your fine presentation on this current topic. You talked about several grants, some from the Orange County Workforce Investment Board for Saddleback and IVC, and another multimillion-dollar grant for ATEP. Along that line, I had a question. What sort of matching dollars are involved, if any, for any of these grants from the, from the campuses?
The community colleges overall are exempt from matching requirements in most of these opportunities.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, just briefly to address Trustee Fuentes's concern, which would also be a concern, which is, I think, a well-founded concern, and that is to not create permanent structures around temporary grant monies. But that is also one of the reasons why we hire people specifically that are categorically funded, that, whose employment is contingent upon continuing to receive monies from these sorts of grants. And it seems to me we continue that practice. I don't think that that's necessarily a reason not to pursue some of these opportunities. But just to realize that you're right, there's a beginning and an endpoint to these, and we need to understand that not to build permanent structures around these.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Dave, Trustee Lang. I think that's well stated. I think, though, also, sometimes we, we build anticipation in the community when we begin a program that's temporarily funded. And if it goes away, the questions could be asked, why? And why are we cutting back on programming? I think that I would like to see if the board might direct the chancellor to give us reports, make us knowledgeable as these grant applications are going in, a, you know, economic impact mini-report on mini-report on what might be the liability to the district if a grant is applied for. What's the downside in the coming year if we don't have that money? I think we ought to go about this in a conscious sort of fashion, not just lining up to get our bite at the trough when it might bite us at the other end the next year.
Very good. All right. Administration will do that. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. Dr. Green, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are at the consent calendar, finally. And let me ask my colleagues, any items to poll trustee Lang? We start there.
Yes, I'd like to poll 5.7 for purposes of either abstaining or accusing. I'm not quite sure which.
All right, 5.7. Any others? Trustee Fuentes.
5.1, and if you'll go to somebody else, I'll find the other number.
All right. Trustee Padberg.
5.10.
5.17.
All right, seeing no others, let's vote on the balance of the consent calendar. If there's a motion.
Balance moved.
Balance moved and seconded. Let's discuss. Seeing no discussion. Oh, trustee Fuentes. Wrong button. All right. Very good. Let's vote on the consent calendar, then. All right. Matter carries unanimously. I have a request for the Board to take a break at this point. So let's take a five-minute break. And as I said before, I'll see you back in 15, and we'll deal with the rest of...
Consent calendar.
I'm ready for now.
Let's go, Gary.
Hey, how are you?
I told my kids, because they was asking.
I'm going to.
I know, Shannon.
I just do my shit.
So I was, I was, this caution is...
I'm going to.
I'm going to.
I made my case right now with this Mary, and I wasn't the crazy one thinking about this. I'll get them to talk about that.
We'll be next.
Why I had a long list? I already did my homework. Sounds like, like, anyway.
Yeah.
That changed my mind.
My sister.
I should have.
Yeah. I'm going to get a real meal when I leave.
Don't even worry about it, Mary. We'll go out another time. I'll make it a better place.
Thank you, Jane.
Honestly.
I just had a little, and John asked me, I kind of...
Senate President Gabriel.
No, no, no. It's like the God looks at me. She was all doing things. And then today, when she said, I was like...
I'm not waiting for her to get back to me. Don't you stop.
I went off today, I'm like, okay, it's here. Did she make it along?
Who used to send them?
I had to pay. Just saying. I was like, oh, God.
And then I really don't, I mean, it's not that I don't want, like, I don't want to.
You're listening.
Yes. Why I'm feeling this way, I can't wait. Not anymore.
You distinguish, for me, it's just hundreds.
Absolutely. Okay. Whenever, whatever.
Where you want to go?
I don't care. You guys should pick something.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. I mean, hell, we, no, I was going to say, you got to talk to someone.
I'm not running.
Looking down.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Um, after the...
Nobody doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Um, you can ask me often.
It could be anything. No, I can even do it myself. Just a few minutes.
Well, you wouldn't unless...
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I haven't.
Anyway, anyway, anyway. I mean, it's not that I don't want, like, I don't want to.
You're listening.
Yes, lady. Why I'm feeling this way, I can't wait. Not anymore.
You distinguish, for me, it's just hundreds.
Absolutely. Okay. Whenever, whatever.
Where you want to go?
I don't care. You guys should pick something.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. I mean, hell, we, no, I was going to say, you got to talk to someone.
I'm not running.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Um, after the...
Nobody doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Um, you can ask me often.
It could be anything. No, I can even do it myself. Just a few minutes.
Well, you wouldn't unless...
I don't know.
I'm like, unless...
Somehow, this...
I'll be there.
Somehow, with the...
Yeah.
Holy moly.
I have it now.
Anyway, anyway, anyway. I mean, it's not that I don't want, like, I don't want to.
You're listening.
Yes, lady. Why I'm feeling this way, I can't wait. Not anymore.
You're listening.
You distinguish, for me, it's just hundreds.
Absolutely. Okay. Whenever, whatever.
Where you want to go?
I don't care. You guys should pick something.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. I mean, hell, we, no, I was going to say, you got to talk to someone.
I'm not running.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Um, after the...
Nobody doesn't have to be.
Yeah. Um, you can ask me often.
It could be anything. No, I can even do it myself. Just a few minutes.
Well, you wouldn't unless...
I don't know.
Unless...
I'll be there.
Somehow, with the...
Yeah.
I haven't.
Anyway, anyway, anyway. Yeah, from Iowa, yeah. I guess I would probably like to work.
I know, dude.
Well, it's not like I can't do the expertise.
So, I didn't really seem to be saying something about this.
Is it?
Chicken.
Well, sometimes that's a...
I'm just...
Friday, right?
Friday, why not?
Why not?
Why not? I don't know that we'll have a senior report. I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
Not that I...
I haven't accessed it.
I think it's...
Every day.
We're supposed to...
I'm thinking.
Well, you wouldn't unless...
I don't know.
I don't know.
Somehow, this...
I'll be there.
Somehow, with the...
Yeah.
I haven't.
Anyway, anyway, anyway.
Yeah, from Iowa, yeah. I guess I would probably like to work.
I know, dude.
Well, it's not like I can't do the expertise.
So, I didn't really seem to be saying something about this.
Is it?
Chicken.
And a lot of...
I love them.
Made it, it works.
That here?
Well, sometimes that's a...
I'm just...
Oh, yeah.
Friday, right?
Friday, why not?
Why not?
Why not? I don't know that we'll have a senior report. I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
No, you guys...
I know.
Not that I...
I think it's...
I think it's...
I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't.
Now, you guys...
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
I know.
I know.
Friday, right?
Friday, why not?
Why not?
Why not? I don't know that we'll have a senior report. I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
No.
Not that I...
I haven't accessed it.
I think it's...
I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't.
Now, you guys...
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
No.
Not that I...
I think it's...
I think it's...
I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't.
Now, you guys...
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
Not that I...
I think it's...
I think it's...
I think it's...
I'm going to check to see if she's done anything on the way.
I haven't.
I haven't even accessed it.
Yeah.
I know.
Not that I...
I think it's...
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 I have not bought.
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 Oh, that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I am not...
Okay.
No, we're taking a break.
Uh, we certainly could. I think I'll be ready.
Sure.
What's going to work for you on Thursday?
Okay.
Why don't I call you tomorrow?
I was so focused on getting everything done.
Had I...
So, but I do, I'll have a bunch of stuff for both of you.
Every time you say it, I just...
Okay, I'll call you, I'll call you tomorrow.
We are coordinating, guys, accurateations.
Yeah.
We're just going to have a picture.
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Until I look at you today.
Yeah, I'll...
No, 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 back there.
Got it.
In front of the sign.
Got it.
I'll be, I'll go back.
I just wanted to say, I don't know what time I'll be home, so...
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
The girl...
All right.
Appreciate that.
This one part of it.
I ordered new ones, or a red one today, so, uh, I'll forget.
The second show in this two weeks.
You almost missed it.
Oh, no, I know.
I was hoping, I was just...
All right. This is almost it.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The people who grew in, it's kind of...
Brass grew in your feet.
Yeah. I like what this lady was saying. I was thinking, with the fact people in here, it's not like that. I was just not including the stimulus.
The money's coming from the other...
So, the only connection...
All workforce related.
I mean, a bit of attention to you.
When you come to academics, or...
Yeah.
Of course, you're back there, too.
Yeah.
You're stealing.
I wouldn't.
I know, I said, I'm going to text it.
Actually, I didn't say that.
I was...
I was...
I was...
Didn't that?
Oh, my God.
I know, I know.
It's the, it's the kind of bill that's...
Yeah.
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 I know, I know.
It's the kind of bill that's...
Yeah.
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 The second show in this two weeks.
You almost missed it.
Oh, no, I told you.
All right, this is almost it.
The people who we're in, it's kind of just kind of brass going in your feet.
I like what this lady was saying. I was thinking with the fact he wanted to make that. I was just not including him in this. The only connection.
I mean, a bit of attention to you.
He comes out academic, academic stuff.
Part of your back there. You're stealing. I wouldn't.
Actually, I didn't see that.
I didn't. Oh, my God.
I know, I know.
It's the kind of bill. Yeah. So. Well, I was looking for some bail out for the teacher.
No, if I do, I will.
Okay.
If I do.
Yeah. Some people, I couldn't imagine. I know there's.
I read it when I went over.
You're not looking at.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, you know, the case was.
All the women.
Hey. So many damn rumors that. I just got people. Get them something.
Regularly become a. All good. After.
I heard that too. I heard that one.
What are you gonna do?
I don't know.
You don't know? Maybe you retire. Sound like. I know definitely maybe. Between Bill and Black Miracle.
Mine's retired now, right?
No.
Oh, yeah. But you would almost.
Then he does. And then he comes back.
No, it's tomorrow. It's not tonight. That's not so bad.
I'm really concerned about this coming back. Because just that one part. Well, yeah, that's. Oh, okay, because I was just looking at the summary.
It's just that when they separate. I just.
Thank you. Made my heart skip a beat. Appreciate that. Like that look you got going there. Yeah, your feet take because you don't.
These are good times for you not to be negotiating.
I'm really glad Gary has no idea how bad it is. With everything else on what's going on. Gary, just between you and me, the other guy said. There is more money than. Get some coffee? Looked at just says, um, another secret Bible not. Oh, Gary. Okay, what kind of, don't you guys have like a fifty million? Funds, uh, maybe what unallocated. Those? But maybe allocated.
When that's Bill's deal.
Yeah. Yeah, well, then we could change something. Or was it?
That email? Cover to this. I used, there was a note there that said from CCA. It was in Scott's email. Yours is nicer than mine because yours is tall, but you have a color printer. Those IT guys. They have the red, the red. This, this svelte model, right?
The lighting is terrible.
Oh, they're getting a new picture book. This isn't a good. Yeah, it's taken a few hits on the job. I think that can. I was afraid if we pitched.
John should put his shoulder behind. John, you should put your shoulder behind Tom's shoulder. It'll work better. No, 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 behind. And you couldn't have gotten it. The gentleman. Oh, it's perfect. No, no, that's the perfect. Yeah, I know what you're saying. Supposed to be no profit.
See, that's the problem is there's really.
One word, Photoshop.
What's that?
Photoshop. Oh, my word, was somebody that sad. Call order. That's extra.
No opportunity.
My sport is.
They have, well, they're after. In the meantime, something's happening.
I value life.
It's fucking.
We're about to come back to order. If I may ask everyone to take their seats. All right, we are back from our break, less than fifteen minutes. My congrats to everybody who managed that. We have a number of items pulled from the consent calendar, and we will start with item five point one, removed by trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number five point two, it's mentioned that the funding will be through the combined budget allocation of the associated students of Irvine Valley College, Department General Fund, and the foundation. I thought that in the past, this particular item was fully funded by other than general fund.
I'm, I'm gonna ask for us to stop for a moment. What item are you?
Five point two.
Five point one, I think, is what you said and asked to pull.
Well, excuse me.
All right.
Why would I want to, why would I want to pull the minutes?
I thought you might have a problem. I, I, I thought you were looking to take out the reference to no hair. No. Then, then we have, we have actually already approved five point two, however.
May, maybe it's just a matter of information.
It might, it might be. Do we, if we need to revoke, let's see if we can address your question. If we need to revoke, we will.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Of Irvine Valley College, I guess, would be the source of an answer.
Yes, so your question was.
My question was then that, that I thought in the past, the funding for the forensic team activities, as addressed in five point two, was all taken care of without the use of general fund dollars in the past. And I, I noticed that it includes general fund dollars now.
Yes, there, there has historically been a small amount of general fund included from their department budgets for a portion of this. No change from prior years.
I, I wonder if just information, maybe on a personal basis, you could get to me the breakdown of where those dollars, how they break down from associated student dollars, general fund dollars, and foundation dollars, that maybe other board members would have an interest, but it was my understanding that in the, in the past, there used to be a line in this text that said, and, and there are no, is it here?
The chancellor is giving, uh, is pointing to the last page.
Ah, it is there.
Those are just estimates is all. That's not.
But, but the general fund. Is the. Eleven thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars?
Yes, that's correct. I unfortunately lost Professor Rybal, who was just here, but.
He was here for this item, but then you told.
Okay, we'll call that information. Thank you.
You're, you're all right with that?
That's all right.
Because we can redo it. Okay, then, as a housekeeping matter, I'll entertain a motion to approve five point one. All right, all in favor? Abstentions, noes, matter carries unanimously. All right, which now points us, I believe, at five point seven, which was pulled by trustee Lang. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve. And it's moved in second, and let's vote on the item. Matter carries with one abstention. A recusal. We, we've agreed in the past that it's a recusal under those circumstances, and I trust the minutes will still reflect. All right, item five point ten, removed by trustee Padberg. And let me get a motion for discussion purposes. Moved in second. All right, and trustee Padberg?
I noticed this is for four individuals to attend. I wondered if those have, people have been identified, and then. Oh, four days. Thank you. Is there any idea of how many people will attend? And then it's at the resort and spa at the Arizona Biltmore. I don't know what this learning conference summit is. I wonder if we could get some more information on this before we vote on it.
I asked for that.
It's, it's this information.
Yes, the information is available at your desk and also was sent out by email today per trustee Lang's request.
All right, moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And matter carries unanimously. Thank you. The last item I have is item five point one seven, pulled by trustee Fuentes.
My questions are in two parts. The first one I would direct to President Burnett on the first page of five point seven. It refers to a payment of thirty thousand dollars to Laguna Ballet for the performance of The Nutcracker at the McKinney Theater. Is that a, a net thirty thousand dollars, or is revenue received against that? Is there a, is there a loss on it, or do we make money on it, or what does that thirty thousand dollar represent?
You know, trustee Fuentes, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I do know that every year they do contract out for this Nutcracker performance with the Laguna Ballet, so I do know it comes every year. I can find out, too. I don't believe there's anybody in the audience here that would know that specifically question, if it's net or gross. I believe it's gross, but I don't want to stake my.
Trustee Williams thinks perhaps he has.
In years past, the question has been asked. I believe it's offset by revenue, and the Angels raises money, so that's a fee, but the ticket sales help offset that.
Right. That's why I said it was a gross fee.
That's one of the more expensive plays at McKinney Theater, I know.
Right.
So I'm sure that the revenue offsets the fee. At least it has in the past. That's my recollection. Is that correct still?
Oh, you do know, Carmen?
A guest artist, they have a fee, and then it's used as a major fundraiser, which is lovely because the Angels do scholarships and do a lot of community outreach. That's really valuable.
So, so when, when this thirty thousand dollars is paid from the general fund, from taxpayer dollars, then tickets are sold to the event, and that revenue comes back to this fund or goes otherly?
Oh, I don't know that. I'm, I'm sorry if I gave you the impression that I know that it comes out of the general fund. I believe the Angels is its own self-funding mechanism and that they raise the money to pay the contract. And then they, they use the money to raise more money as a fundraising activity. I don't think it comes out of the college general fund, but Carol Hilton or Kate Realista would have that information.
But do we approve all expenditures by the Angels?
That I don't have the.
I, I believe it's correctly from Gary. This is all due because it's a contract. Isn't that correct? Payments to a contract that we are, I want to say we're fronting for this performance because it hasn't happened yet, but.
Tom's question is, do we, the Angels, I would not, I would think do not.
This isn't Angels.
Probably, I'm not positive of this, but the Angels probably don't run contracts through the board. It wouldn't be a general fund contract. I'm not sure, but so it tells me this is a college contract.
Yeah, I, I don't know it's Angels. I think Carmen was talking more about something else.
And then the Angels would be raising money to, to help the department fund its activities.
Correct.
Okay, well, I guess I would like to understand if, if we approve thirty thousand dollars of general fund taxpayer money for the performance of The Nutcracker, and then tickets are sold and revenue is generated, does that come back into the fund? Or are we actually spending thirty thousand dollars for an entertainment performance?
It's not, it's, it's not general fund. I'm sorry. It's, it's not general fund.
It's not.
It's not general fund?
No.
Okay, but then, but then my question is, do we vote on expenditures by the Angels? The Angels is a nonprofit subsidiary foundation support group. Is that our business?
Well, I'm not sure a hundred percent it's actually the Angels that are doing this. It may be one of the other foundation accounts, and that's why I said, Gary, I thought you could jump in. I thought for all contracts that we sign that are with a dollar amount are approved by the board.
We are not approving for, we are not approving this contract. It has already been approved.
Right.
We're merely, we're merely getting the information and ratifying it.
Okay, the, the answer to Todd's question is that the board does not approve foundation contracts. The foundation board approves foundation contracts. There is, it's a separate organizations with separate authorities to contract.
All right, I, I guess then what I would like to ask is, maybe by the next meeting, we could get some sort of report, because I see there's other items here. I see there's this performance for yesterday and today for another ten thousand dollars, et cetera. If, if we could have an understanding of how that money works, because I, I might have a different attitude as a trustee if we were spending thirty thousand dollars and thirty-five thousand dollars are coming back in ticket sales going into this fund. Or if we're spending thirty thousand dollars and twenty-eight thousand dollars is coming back, but if we're spending thirty thousand dollars on a performance, I, I'd like to know that. A net or gross or what it is or, okay? Then, next item I have, thank you, if that's not asking too much.
Can I, can I interrupt you at this point? The, the chancellor had looked to get in, maybe you want to address that particular issue?
I, I would just like to say that instead of giving you some confusing answers, I would rather research it and provide you accurate information through my update. I'll work with President Burnett and Deputy Chancellor Porter and others, and we'll provide you the answer that you're looking, I mean, the answer that you deserve.
Super, and, and I, and I'm sure it's all up and up and is just fine. I just don't understand it, and it's not gonna stop me from approving it.
Now, wait, now let me, now let me stop you again. Trustee Padberg would like to speak, and, and if it's to this item, I'll address, she can address it, and then you'll take your second point.
Well, I, I'm not clear what trustee Fuentes' objections are, and I'm just wondering if we can, because there are tons of items on these three pages or four pages that we have, if we, three pages, if we could separate out the question for some of these that he finds that he needs more information on, and then vote on the others. I, I guess that the contracts have already been agreed to, so it really doesn't, we're not holding up anything if we table this and bring it back the next meeting. Is that correct?
Well, I, I don't even require that, Nancy. I'd just like to know what we're doing here, what, what these numbers reflect, because after all, it's done. It's been done, as far as I understand.
They're here for ratification.
Right, okay.
Your, your other item.
Next item, and this is to Irvine Valley College. I see one, two, three, four, five items for a lease agreement for display of artwork, each at two thousand five hundred dollars apiece. That'd be a lot of money. That'd be fifteen thousand dollars, is it? No.
Twelve.
It's twelve, twelve five.
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve five. David, help us. Twelve, twelve five. Are, are we actually spending twelve thousand five hundred dollars to rent art?
Essentially, yes. It is rented for two years. It is actually outdoor sculptures, and the hope and the, and the drive, the desire is to have a donor that will purchase them. And after two years, if, if that doesn't happen, then we open up another competition to bring in additional.
A donor to purchase them for the college.
Yes, that's.
Oh, clever, yeah. Great, thank you.
No further discussion?
Move the item.
Item's been moved. Moved in second, then let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. We are at item six point two. This is ratification of the CSEA Employee Master Agreement. It is to run through June thirty, two thousand eleven. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mr.
All right, the chancellor would like to, to jump in here.
Thank you. I would just like to take this opportunity to recognize the members of the team from both sides, from the CSEA as well as from the district, who have worked long and hard in coming to this agreement. From the CSEA, I'd like to thank Gerald Dulittle, Scott Ferguson-Green, Dwayne Main, Shanna Morehouse, Hedy Renfro, Mary Williams, and also Guillermo Santucci as the CSEA Labor Representative. And from the district, Dr. David Bouguet, Eddie Graham, Beth Muller, and our counsel, Steve Anderson from Atkinson, Anderson, Lawyer, and Romo, for their work in negotiating this agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Fuentes.
Well, the chancellor pulled, took the words out of my mouth, and of course, he doesn't include himself, and he deserves a vote of thanks for his leadership with this wonderful team that moved so promptly on this, and I think they should all be heartily commended. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Vote on the item. And the matter carries unanimously. Thank you to everyone who did, in fact, work very hard on that item. All right, we are here at item six point, that was down there. I don't know what that was. Item six point three.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. This is to clean up some technical snafus on the vote I conducted last, last month. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote on the item. And it carries unanimously. Item six point four, here for approval. This deals with the mission statements of.
Approval.
Colleges. All right, moved and seconded. Discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Here for review and study is item six point one five, the district mission and vision statements and goals for two thousand nine and ten. Discussion? Chancellor.
I would just like to point out that for the exhibit B, we have a replacement page in front of you. We have provided that to include vision and mission statement along with the proposed district-wide goals for oh nine, ten.
All right, this is here for ratification, excuse me, for review and study. My apologies. Let's vote. The item is unanimously accepted for review and study. For approval, IVC Grand Acceptance and Teacher Preparation Pipeline. Approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously, and item six point seven, an honorary associate degree. This is here for approval.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? Trustee Milchiker.
I was just wondering, I, I think it's wonderful to grant honorary degrees. Why can't we look into presenting these honorary degrees at, at our graduation ceremonies? That's a question. I'm not sure who I'm directing it to. I guess Chancellor Mather.
The president.
President Rockmore. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, since they're coming from us, the reason is that it would lengthen the commencement ceremony, and so we hold out a separate ceremony, which is actually quite nice, and everyone's invited to attend that.
Okay.
So it's just, just in order of not lengthening the commencement is the only reason.
Well, the commencements were, were beautiful this year, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I think all of the three candidates that are indicated are extremely worthy of the honorary degrees that are being awarded, and certainly follows the Board Policy sixty-two hundred that we have on this. But I did note in trying to follow up on this item or understand this item a little more, that in the Board Policy, it calls for us to establish procedures and criteria for awarding these, which has not been done yet, and so I think we just need to note that for follow-up to make sure that that does happen, presumably in the for, form of administrative regulations.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, I would certainly agree with trustee Lang. I just want to comment that Hugh Olhouser is a favorite of mine. I'm so sorry that I had to miss the IVC Foundation Awards Dinner and, and his appearance there. I had a conflict. I had to be at the Dana Point City Council that night. But also, I want to comment and congratulate President Rockmore on the scholarship awards ceremony at IVC. It was incredibly streamlined, and I'm just wondering if you could put your talent to work on all of our graduations. I don't want to take away anything from them, but, but that, that was amazing how well you did the scholarship awards ceremony. And I don't know how we can do any streamlining with graduation, but that might be something that you could sit down and think about. Thank you.
And the board meetings.
And the board meetings.
You could add that. By the way, at the scholarship awards ceremony, Hugh Howser is exactly the same on TV as he is in person. He says, "That is amazing." I just love it when he says that. But I wonder if we might want to just discuss it and revisit, because it would be, I don't think it would take that long to present them at graduation, and it just might be nice to present them at the graduation, because it's such a nice ceremony. We give, we grant emeritus status to our retiring faculty members and give a short presentation to the Teacher of the Year and Associate Teacher of the Year. So I'd just like to look into that, okay? Okay, thank you so much.
Chancellor Mather.
Trustee Lang, I would just like you to know that since you and I talked about this item this morning, I have discussed this with Deputy Chancellor Porter about the need for developing AR in this area, since Deputy Chancellor chairs the District Board Policy and Administrative Regulations Council. Thank you.
All right, let's vote on the item. Well, I mean, was it moved and seconded? I don't remember. All right, sounds good. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.8, some word of bid.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. We are at 6.9, also an item here for approval, a contract with NUDESIC.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Let's vote. 610 is here, matter carries unanimously. 610 is here for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Discussion? Chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. This item really breaks some new ground. I would just like to take a moment to highlight this, this particular item. For example, over my academic plan, there was an in-house developed software system, has been extremely helpful to students in planning their educational programs, and so much so that other community college districts have been interested in looking at this program and wanting to utilize it in their colleges. That led to recognition of our program by the State Chancellor's office, along with a grant, to see how we can make this kind of system available to other community colleges up and down the state. Some vendors have expressed an interest in marketing this for us and potentially generating some dollars for the district. Having said that, if I may, I'd like to call upon Vice Chancellor Brumucci to make any further comments on this.
We had developed MAP and been using it for two years, and students had flocked to it, creating over 40,000 successful academic plans to kind of prepare for their future, when we finally decided we were going to go out and tell other people what we had done. And so all of this interest has arisen in a very short amount of time, just over a few months of making presentations at conferences. And we then followed suit by, with the ongoing CIST project. We presented on the CIST for the first time at the recent CISTOL Conference, and it's telling that within a week, we were also receiving entreaties from software vendors regarding meetings, similar meetings about the CIST. So I think it speaks very well of the quality of the district IT, as well as all of our partners, because the methodology they use to make the software uses constant user input. So it's really a team effort. I think it speaks well of the whole district.
Thank you very much. Trustee Padberg.
I just want to compliment and congratulate our IT staff, and I see you have a brief PowerPoint. I'm just wondering if you could quickly show us how it works, if that's possible. I'm certainly going to support the item, but I do think it'd be helpful.
Okay. In general, what this is, is a proposal from our partner in creating both MAP and the CIST, NUDESIC. What it does is to propose a structure of creating a business unit within NUDESIC, that we would retain the intellectual property, that they would do the work of marketing and supporting the product. This addresses our concern of, we certainly want other people to be able to benefit from software that they could use. However, our primary duty is to our own constituents. And so we are perfectly willing to allow people to use our intellectual property, but we do not want to be in the business of serving their students. So NUDESIC will take over the part of doing the sales, of doing the support, of hosting the service, and we would retain intellectual property rights, and then there would be a sharing of revenue.
I understand that's what the item is. I just thought maybe you could describe briefly what MAP does for students.
Okay, sure. Is Jim still on? Okay. I could, but I couldn't do it as well as Jim Gaster, so I'm going to call it him.
Yeah, the students have responded so positively, and I think that's really important for everybody to hear.
Yeah, just real briefly, it's a very sophisticated program, so at some point in the future, if you're interested, we could do a workshop. We could actually demonstrate.
Jim, can you put the microphone up? Oh, there you are.
Is it better?
Speak into it.
Okay. And so essentially, in a nutshell, what it does is it guides a student through the process of setting an academic goal, whether it be an associate's degree, a certificate, or transfer. Then it presents for them a list of courses that they can select from, from either Saddleback or IVC, and then lays out a plan for them on which courses they need to take. And it's a very complex task, particularly for somebody coming new into college, when you're dealing with prerequisites, prerequisites. Certain courses are accepted for transfer at CSU, others at UC. It's very confusing, and we just don't have the counseling staff to advise every single student. So that MAP is meant to be used in conjunction with the counselors. It's certainly not meant to replace them. And our hope is that what it does is it frees up the counselors from some of the drudgery of explaining the details of that over and over again, and frees them up to actually do the things that computers can't do, which is just interacting with the students, using their intuition and judgment. And so we're really excited about it. It's currently semi-integrated with registration, but we have some pretty exciting plans to make it even more so. And it really is a tribute to the entire team. The counselors at Saddleback and IVC are the ones who really drove this. A lot of it was their idea, and so we're really grateful to them for all the work they put into it.
As a follow-up, I know that President Wagner has asked that we have a report on software for registration, and I'm wondering if there's any thought to expanding this program for high school students that might be looking forward to coming here.
Yeah, absolutely. MAP doesn't restrict anyone, any existing student can use MAP, so there's no restrictions on it in that sense. And the integration we have with registration, it'll actually let them know if they can be taking the courses that they'd like to take.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Very much. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, it's excellent. I just have several questions, and they're somewhat technical questions. One of them is, I use MySite all the time, and really think it's excellent. And I register for classes all the time, and I just got my AA degree last year in Spanish, so I'm on it, but I never saw how to get into MAP as a continuing student. How do you get into MAP from MySite itself? And as I said, that's just a technical question.
Yeah, it's available to all. If you have a, if MySite recognizes you as a student, it is available to you. Just look in the left navigation, and you should see something that says "My Academic Plan."
Okay, thank you.
And if you click on that, it'll step it through. Even it has tutorial videos that show you how to use it.
Good, excellent. And then I also wondered, this is intellectual property that we're marketing to other institutions, which is a great idea. It's very entrepreneurial, and certainly we pay to have it developed in our district, to have our really good people develop it. So can intellectual property be patented anyway, so no one can steal it? That's a legal question, I guess. Do you happen to know that?
It is possible, but controversial, to patent software. So we haven't pursued that yet. We have the copyrights and certainly the first product that's out there. If it's so directed by the board, we will investigate that, but I feel compelled to tell you that there is some controversy around the entire notion of patenting software.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's typically copyrighted, right. Trustee Lang.
Actually, that partially addressed my issue, and that was whether we do have existing copyright protection on this, since we're obviously looking to take this to the next level. And is this an open source type of code that we use for this, or we're, I just, you know, maybe you can help me out on some of that.
Well, it's actually not open sourced. It is built upon a proprietary framework. It's a Microsoft product. It's a .NET framework.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the And the matter carries unanimously. 611 is here for discussion and/or approval. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Move, we have?
Move approval.
Move for approval. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, earlier, when these were presented to us, there is included here a 14016 Drug-Free Environment and Drug Prevention Program. I believe I urged those working on this that we might express in it a zero tolerance attitude and a reality that our campuses are, in essence, a drug-free zone. This Drug-Free Environment and Drug Prevention Program policy, I think skirts those specific points. I think that it leads toward them, but I would like to see it more forcefully stated, that zero tolerance is the policy of this district, perhaps in those words, and that the campuses of the South Orange County Community College District are a drug-free zone, perhaps in those words. Also, my reading of this is that while we discourage and condemn here the use of drugs and alcohol on our campus, it doesn't speak to, as far as I can see, somebody who does alcohol and drugs across the street and then comes to campus under the influence, perhaps not a DUI, but a SUI or a TUI, studying under the influence or teaching under the influence. I think we need to toughen this up. I think we need stronger language that speaks to zero tolerance, a drug-free zone, and being under the influence, not just doing that on campus, but coming in that condition.
Trustee Williams.
Well, we have our campus police in the room here. If someone were to come to campus under the influence, they could be and likely would be arrested by campus safety. So that's already covered in the criminal statutes, and we have fully post-certified campus police officers 24/7. So this policy talks about, in the second paragraph, the unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispensing, possession, so on, is prohibited. But we don't have to put in the policy that if you violate a law, you're going to be subject to arrest. That's a given. So, I don't know, do we need to put in there that you can be subject to arrest? I think that's pretty much an accepted fact, because we have campus police. If someone's under the influence of alcohol or drugs, they'll do an appropriate, you know, contact and probably be arrested. So, do we need that in the policy?
Well, your law enforcement background, John, might tell us this, but is that true, officer?
No pressure here, right?
If a student comes on campus having had a joint across the street, or a glass of vodka, or two or three across the street, do you automatically arrest them?
I don't know that it's going to be an automatic arrest, but we do, we have had circumstances here on campus where we have arrested people for being under the influence of different types of drugs. And alcohol is a different situation. Usually, you don't arrest them and take them to jail, but there is a process where you can cite them.
Site and release.
Right.
Why not tell them? Why not give fair warning?
In the policy?
In the policy, to say that this is a drug-free zone, an alcohol-free zone, and one under the influence is not welcome on the campus.
Because we are not a, for example, an alcohol-free zone. On both campuses, we're entitled to serve alcohol. This board has passed that policy, and the foundations have made use of it. So there's a problem with zero tolerance that I think we've all seen, and I apologize for jumping in front of some of my colleagues, but I wanted to make the point. We are not a zero tolerance institution, and we've all seen and read stories, I read one of a kid with an asthma attack on a bus, and a, you know, another kid gave her the inhaler, saved her life, and the other kid was suspended, because that's a violation of zero tolerance. We've all heard stories of people sharing aspirins, and that's technically a violation of zero tolerance. I think this policy says the district shall be free from unlawful possession, use, or distribution, et cetera, and that's enough discretion, in my view, for administration and for our absolutely wonderful police forces to deal with the issues as they come up on a case-by-case basis. Certainly, this isn't, in my view, a rampant problem that needs to be addressed in a board policy. And I do think also, you know, with respect to teaching under the influence, that's a contract issue, and we have procedures in place to deal with that. So again, I'd really be reluctant to burden this board policy with all of this sort of social engineering, when the policy says, I think, what it needs to say, and gives to administration and our police forces the discretion they need. I apologize. I jumped in in front of Trustee Padberg.
I'm not finished.
Did you have the floor?
I did.
All right, then finish. Sorry then.
The key is unlawful possession. And Trustee Wagner mentioned a foundation event at a certain location on either campus that's authorized under the law, if alcohol is served. For example, UC Irvine has a club where they serve alcohol. That's not the unlawful possession and consumption. That's lawful. We're talking in the policy, the second paragraph, the unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispensing, possession, or use of a controlled substance. So that's, this is pretty good. I don't know if we want to muck it up too much, Tom, but if you don't want to approve it, I mean, we can come back with it, but we also don't want to make it too complicated for campus safety to have, they're enforcing the criminal statutes, minor in possession of alcohol under the influence of OPS, all of those things with a board policy. We need to make sure the board policy doesn't restrict their ability to do their job. So I'm comfortable with it the way it is, and I haven't heard any other objections.
Trustee Padberg.
I think that my comments are going to be consistent with Trustee Wagner and Trustee Williams. I do think that it refers to local, state, and federal law, and that's adequate. And to my way of thinking, use means not only when you ingest it, whatever it is, but whether you are under the influence of it. So I do believe that at Saddleback and maybe at IVC, we have a wine tasting class. Is that not true? We used to.
We have.
We have had in the past. Do you?
Well, let's have one.
You have to get enrolled, and you have to pass an exam. But I agree. I think it's pretty clear, and if there's abuse and it's a problem, that's when we need to intercede.
Would you like to divide the question?
I would just like to say that, hearing that, and I think those comments are all insightful, I would like to ask maybe at a later time if we could ask our two police chiefs to give a little further briefing to the board on handling under the influence on the campuses. I would like a little more clear understanding of how that is treated.
Would you like the question divided?
Pardon?
Would you like the question divided?
No, no, no. I'll go along with this, but I'd like that full report.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the package of policies, and they're here for approval.
No, this was for approval tonight.
This was for approval tonight, and I believe they have carried unanimously. All right. Here for review and study is 6.12, which is another couple of policies.
Move acceptance. Review and study.
Second. Second.
All right. Discussion? All right, let's vote on.
Just one, one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead then.
Just so you know, I have a private cellphone. If taxpayers pay for it, sorry. If the taxpayers pay for it, your private phone bill is subject to public records disclosure. Keep that in mind.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. And the matter carries with one no vote. 6.13. I think trustee Milchiker would like to revise and extend her remarks.
I'd like to, I just thought I'd mention that.
Clear, and let's vote again. That's fine, that's fine.
I'd like to vote again. None of the trustees have cellphones that are paid for by district tax dollars, is to my understanding. So, this is just, this is just for staff. Right, okay.
Don't get your hopes up of rooting through our phone bill.
Thank you.
The matter this time carries unanimously. All right. We are here at 6.13, the faculty hiring.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. We are at 6.14, which is a resolution for classified employee layoff. It's here for.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion? All right. Seeing none, as it's a resolution, madam secretary, if you would call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Very good. All right. Yes, sir.
I move that we extend the meeting until 9:15. See, I got the latest.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, as matter carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item 6.15, here for approval, this is the academic personnel action items.
Anything to pull? Nothing, move approval.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to split the item on this.
Well, it's my understanding that IVC would like to remove one of the items. Am I correct about that? All right. So, there is an item to remove, B1.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
To approve is.
Draw the second.
Well, move approval with that change.
Move approval with item B1 removed, and it will not be voted on tonight.
Now, where's D1? I don't see that.
B1.
Page two of Exhibit A.
Page two of A.
Okay, it's right here.
I will second.
All right. Moved in seconded. Discussion, trustee Lang.
Two of Exhibit A, you're on six. Two. This is still four, this is two, right here. Are we voting now?
B1.
In a minute.
B1, okay, not D1.
B as in boy.
Got it.
As in Bill.
Vote.
As in Bravo. Bravo, Bill. Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Item B1 has been pulled, everything else is here for approval, no discussion, let's vote. And the matter carries unanimously. 616, also here for approval, classified personnel action items. I hesitate to ask, are there any changes?
Sure.
You sure?
Second.
All right. Moved in seconded, let's, seeing no requests to speak, let's vote. And that passes unanimously.
Seven to one.
We are at some information items, 7.1.
Seven to one on information items.
Second.
I think that's illegal. They don't need to be all the information.
Is there any objection to that from any of my colleagues?
No, no.
Trustee Padberg.
I don't believe that we need to vote on information items or accept them, so I think it's not necessary.
My only issue is, do you want me to run through each one of them and give you all an opportunity to comment on any one of them in particular?
Well, you could make a motion that we accept the presentation, but we're not approving them. I mean, there's nothing to approve.
Acceptance of all the votes.
Okay, whatever.
I just want to make sure nobody wants to talk about any of these items. Since nobody wants to talk about any of these items, we will now move to item eight, which is the reports. And we will start only because he has a big shiny trophy sitting in front of him.
What trophy? What are you talking about? What trophy here, Don? Anyway, thank you very much, President Wagner. First, I would like to offer my congratulations on behalf of Saddleback College to Bianca Bailey. We're thrilled to have you up there, and we look forward to working with you. I'd also like to acknowledge what you'll hear about in a few minutes, our new ASG president, Delaney Taylor, who has stayed here for the entire meeting and will be giving a report later on. So, welcome, Delaney, we're thrilled to have you here. As you know, Friday was a big day for our college, for in particular our students, but it was also a very big day for me. And I want to thank all of you very much for the wonderful participation and support, wonderful speeches, and help with the commencement process. I think it was a wonderful commencement. Obviously, I don't have anything to compare it to from Saddleback, but I thought it was wonderful, and I think you all made it wonderful, the chancellor, trustees, and of course everyone else that participated. So, thank you very much. Also, I wanted to give the equal thanks to all the board members that were able to attend the scholarship ceremony. It was wonderful that we gave out 160 scholarships, over $265,000 worth, and wanted to once again thank all the people that worked on that. I'm pleased to report that actually Saddleback College, if you didn't notice a while ago, several months, we redesigned our website. We won second place in the state, all of community colleges. Out of 110 community colleges, won second place for our website. I won't say who beat us, but.
Not at all.
Next, I did want to say, and I probably should have chimed in earlier, but there was so much to talk about, but I talked to the chancellor earlier, we'll be providing much more detailed information on the tremendous amount of work that our staff, our faculty, and our administration have been doing on trying to get grants that only support programs that we would like to develop and already existing programs to expand with the federal stimulus money. So, that'll be coming down the future. I also want to take this opportunity to say that at our college, Mary Williams, who's right down here, has done a phenomenal job in applying for grants, applied for many, we've already received several grants, and we owe her a great deal of help and appreciation for that. There's one program I think that all the trustees would be very thrilled about, and that's called the Summer Youth Employment Program. We have increased it tremendously, and Saddleback College will be hiring dozens of our local area youth this summer to help them with some jobs. Finally, the moment you've all been waiting for.
We're out of time, sorry.
I knew you were going to do that. But I have an award for you. I actually have an award. First, Wendy Gabriella, who is, and president Glenn Rockmore, and president Don Wagner, brought the idea to have an annual tradition of doing the employee softball game between IVC and Saddleback. We at Saddleback think that was a wonderful tradition to start, and we thank you all very much for this just glorious trophy that you made for us. Thank you. But with that said, in recognition and all kidding aside of the great work that you did, I did want to present two things to, first, to president Rockmore, a picture of the game, a beautiful picture, and also to president Wagner, a wonderful picture, as you guys can all see, which was actually a terrific picture, and was really fun. Also, academic senate president Wendy Gabriella had mentioned that whoever was to lose the game is supposed to wear the other colleges' shirts at the next board meeting. So, I got you one here, Glenn, for next board meeting, because I know it's hard, and Wendy, I got you one here, too. So, no. Anyway, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, and it was a lot of fun. Trustee Padberg, your request to speak?
I did want to speak to this. I don't know why you didn't get one for president Wagner, because he played on the losing team as well.
I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't make that bet.
We all said that he would wear it proudly. Correct, president Wagner?
Absolutely.
That's right.
Proudly, those are USC colors, it would have been difficult. President Rockmore.
I will get going here in light of time. I, too, would like to congratulate Bianca, wonderful having you up here. Unfortunately, Denise Batista, our new ASG president, is not here tonight, so I will go ahead and defer her introduction until she does show. And thank you all, chancellor and trustees, for being a part of our scholarship program and also our commencement program. Wonderful, wonderful contributions from everybody. We are very busy right now, working with 25% increase in enrollments at the campus. It's keeping us really quite busy to handle all of that, but obviously, there's a lot of folks that are needing to get an education right now, and we're trying to help with that. Light of time, I'll end here. My colleague failed to mention that I struck him out twice. And apparently, as a result, he stole my baseball mitt, but he had it bronzed for me, so that was, that was nice. It was a great game, that's it.
Thank you. Provost Stevens.
Thank you, and also from the ATAP staff, welcome Bianca. Brief report tonight, just wanted to mention also, the chancellor also mentioned we, with some ATAP staff and others, visited Aloney College, looking at their nursing simulation center, and then stayed another day with some other additional staff, and were able to see several other nursing simulation centers. And I might add, with a real focus from my point, to look at models for cost sharing with the partnerships, so that we could look at income models for assuring such a center to sustain ongoing cost. So, we're looking at that. Continued work with potential partnerships, and we have a meeting, some of our staff, to their presentation at Cal State Long Beach next week, and have done others that we're following up on. That's going well. We completed the, and submitted our CAC state grant for the Center for Applied Competitive Technologies for funding this next year, and should be working to continue to operate our optics and photonics program regarding that. Summer enrollments at ATAP, almost twice what we did last summer, just as a result of some good management by Don Boucher and others on staff, doing block scheduling, so we don't have overlapping, better use of the facilities, and also great communication work from the vice presidents and deans at the two colleges. So, that's great use of our facilities at ATAP. Let's see, and then, and then just to chime in with Glenn Green's presentation, certainly ATAP continues to work both with IVC and Saddleback as a team, with faculty and staff, and making, I think, pretty good progress on joint applications for grants. We're looking forward for opportunities there. Thank you.
Thank you. And professor, and second baseman Gabriella.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that the summer school started today, and classes are packed, as you're hearing. It's wonderful to have packed classes again, but it is very difficult to kind of manage the classroom in that regard. I'd also like to mention that IVC is continuing work on our accreditation self-study. That work will continue over the summer, and we're making pretty good progress. Our first, our first summer steering committee meeting is coming up, where we'll be reviewing the preliminary drafts of the beginning of the report. Faculty are staying involved over the summer because we've asked them to, and so they're staying with us on this project. I'd also like to mention that the softball game originated from an accreditation discussion. As we were discussing how much fun accreditation is, we thought that maybe softball might be a little bit more fun, and so it really was fun, and I think Dr. Burnett, the Saddleback team, was a great host, the pizza, the water, the wheelchair, the oxygen. The wonderful thing that developed from it was the, of course, the camaraderie, both within our team at IVC and then within the two teams. It was really a great experience. Thank you. And then the Aloney trip. The Aloney trip was fabulous. It's well worth the trip. I was really impressed with not only what they've done in terms of environmental sustainability, but how they've integrated the environmental sustainability in with the classroom experience. And so, for example, they talked almost all day long about how teaching and learning is enhanced with the proper environment. And so, it was a really wonderful trip. I'm hoping to get another trip with more faculty, colleagues, and maybe some other board members if they're interested. It was really worthwhile, a very good idea, so thank you.
Thank you. And professor Dominguez.
Hello. First off, I'd like to welcome, on behalf of the faculty of Saddleback College, I'd like to welcome Bianca Bailey. It was lovely to see you win the election, and we were very proud to have a Saddleback student be our new student trustee, and I know you'll do a great job. So, we look forward to having lots of conversations with you. We'll give you our email, and we can talk and have coffee and stuff. The other thing I'd like to talk about is that the accreditation committee is working. They had their steering committee, the first one was this afternoon. Vice president of instruction Rajan Verdin is the committee chair for accreditation, and it's a wonderful conversation with all four committee or standard chairs meeting and discussing new ideas. I'd also like to kind of call out for some of the work that he's done is vice chancellor Bob Ramucci, because he set something up really wonderful for Standard Four at Saddleback College, and it's a program called Basecamp, where we're able to communicate and edit parts of the report online, and everybody can access it and have conversations and write messages and keep in touch. And I think it'll make it incredibly efficient, it'll, it's efficacious, and will really help move our process along. Faculty are staying involved with accreditation over the summer, much like IVC, and we have a really good morale and spirit on working on this project. I'd also like to thank trustee Dave Lang for being such a dedicated member to that. It really makes a difference when the trustees are a part of our conversation, so much more dialogue and occurs, and it's absolutely the way to do it, and I think we've all learned that particular lesson, and it's good to talk to one another. But, and that's all I have for the Saddleback Senate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. And professor Haggerty.
Thank you, president Wagner, board members. First thing I'd like to do is, excuse me, welcome Bianca Bailey as a student trustee for South Orange County Community College District. Had an opportunity to work with Bianca previously, and I know she'll make a good trustee for our district. And I'd also like to indicate that tomorrow I'll start my summer classes. Always a pleasure, as Wendy's indicated, to start a new classes and meet new students and serve the needs of our student population. I also had an opportunity to attend the commencement, which is the culmination of our faculty efforts in regards to working with our students. It was great to see so many of my own personal students graduate, as well as students that I haven't had a chance to work with. Also, got an opportunity to attend the ASG banquet for our students, supporting them as well, and look forward to the completion of the summer semester. Thank you very much.
Go to this end of the table now, welcome president Taylor, and ask if you have a report.
Yeah. First of all, I would like to express my excitement about being at this first board meeting as the new president, and I look forward to seeing you here many nights. And just a quick report from what we're doing in student government, we're pretty much winding down the year and creating visions and goals for the things that we want to accomplish next year. And we're excited to bring forth a new year and showcase the exceptional work that we're capable of. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Couple things. The one thing I keep hoping that we'll figure out around here is cloning, so that we can do about four jobs at one time. For the, the poor senate doesn't get much of me with all that's going on in the world of grants right now, plus negotiations. But I did want to mention that we actually have our first big grant indirectly under the stimulus package, because part of the money went, is Workforce Investment Act dollars, and the MLT, the medical lab technician grant that you approved last month, the, it was $437,000, but it has a renewable component that is routine each year, and so over the four years, we anticipate that that money will be $1,364,000 to develop our lab, our medical lab tech program here. We also have another $800,000 that we're submitting for next week, that we anticipate getting for health science programs. So, it doesn't look like our money, but it really is our money, because it comes through the Workforce Investment Act, and it's what puts so much money up there to do that for the health sciences. In terms of classified, my job as chief negotiator has taken precedence over the last couple of weeks. I'd like to thank Dr. Mather, Dr. Bougaye, Eddie, Beth, even Steve, for their work in, in helping us quickly resolve the contract and giving us a good contract. I think I have to say that my colleague next to me is going through that annual torture that we all experience called a birthday, and this is about the best birthday present you could have given her. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, too, would like to say thank you very much for approving the contract. We worked very hard and worked very well with Dr. David Bougaye and with the chancellor. We met with him a couple of times, and we We met with him a couple of times, and we are really happy about the contract that we received, and thank you for approving it this evening. I do have one comment to make about the May 11 registration. I want all of the board members to know and understand that the classified staff worked circles around to get those students registered. We worked very hard, we stayed almost an hour late, and we do not provide second-rate service to any of our students, and I want all of you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we all know what the G stands for, but let's turn it over to Ms. Dixon now.
Thank you. IVC classified Senate, let's see, commencement was on Friday. Fantastic, IVC. Didn't get a chance to go to Saddleback's, thank you. And we're still very busy this week because we're trying to get our students enrolled in summer school. Hopefully, everything is going to slow down by Friday, June the 12th, because the classified employees are going to take an afternoon off. President Rockmore has given us an afternoon. We are going to the Irvine Regional Park. We're going to have some speakers, some of our faculty, as a matter of fact, and also our vice president of student services will be one of our presenters at our half-day. We're going to have a little fun, and we're going to learn a little bit, and we're going to talk about being green and ergonomics and adapting to today's challenging times and different perspectives and goals and all that good stuff, and we're looking forward to it, and thank you, Dr. Rockmore. Also, our classified employees didn't get a chance to formally or publicly congratulate President Rockmore for being elected as president of the Southern California Community Colleges Chief Executive Officers Association, and so I'd like to take this time right now to say congratulations to our president. And that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. We stand adjourned, see you in June.